It is 7:04, we're calling this meeting to order. Whatever you put your please hand in, drive me the blank.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. I need a motion to approve the minutes on May 2nd of this year.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Hence the second. Comments, observations, changes, corrections, solutions? All in favor of approving as presented?
Not seen.
Okay. No reason to stand?
Oh, you bet.
So, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, oh, 1. Correspondents? Passing around the substitute reports and copy of the letter that went out. Two hour. Faculty. In response to being teacher appreciation week. And a thank you to St. Lawrence and Melvin Gauthier for allowing us to use their facility for AP testing. Second year in a row. It means that everybody gets outside the four walls and there aren't people traveling back and forth and knocking on the door and asking questions in this room. Commendations and good news.
Last week on 13th was blood drive and I talked to the Red Cross as a volunteer and they all said that there was a lot of donors and volunteers helping out and they were really pleased with the outcome of how much, how many donors came in. The May 12th Spring Concert, I heard it was really good. GHS Spring Concert, that went really well and there was a lot of people there. On May 20th, the student council's going on field trip to the State House for a meeting and congratulations to Kayla Reel who's going to be the vice president of our region, student council. GHS is hosting, GHS Got Talent on the 26th and that's run by student council. And the teacher appreciation week last week was really great and all teachers got their flowers and gifts handed to them by the student reps.
Thanks very much.
Also, last week on Saturday was an incredible prom. Our students made the front page of the Gauthstown news and two of them are at my class so I got to see them all gussied up. Eric Greenland has asked me to remind everyone that it's Iron Chef time and if any of you school board folks would like to come over and be an Iron Chef judge. His culinary classes, actually they're in menu production this week. They have to design a menu and cook the meal so if you're interested in judging, please let him know.
It is a wonderful experience, however, the rumors have it is get in the afternoon because it's a little tough to eat like shrimp and stuff at 9:00 in the morning. Do you know what day that is?
The 2nd and 3rd of June. I wasn't going to tell them about the shrimp so we could have.
Yeah.
Thanks. FPLA and the business organization, we've had several field trips. We hosted Scott Gross as a speaker on insurance and he came and we learned a lot from him. And then last week we did go to the mall, not for retail therapy, but we did to speak to several mall managers. We spoke to the woman at The Gap and Lids and Bilderberg. They talked about how they distribute, why they're where they are. We were there for several hours and then came back and debriefed the students, so it was a good time.
At Mountain View, we have a group of excavators that we would like to bring your attention to and to congratulate. Tyler Centoro, Adam Moses, C.N. Mosley and Katie Verstik, sorry, Verstik. For their investment strategy in the stock market game, their financial skills paid off and their team won first place in the elementary regional competition. So they will be recognized at the Stock Market Award Ceremony, which is going to take place on June 1st at Southern New Hampshire University. So congratulations to them.
Do they have room in their book of business for a new client?
Yeah, maybe.
Good news.
I can report out Peggy was unable to be here, she had an excuse absence. She would like to just report that master percussionist Theo Marty is with us for the week as an artist in residency just drumming African drumming. The 3rd and 4th grade students will be participating in another number of African drumming classes during the week and will end the week with a performance and if anybody can get there. I do believe the teachers participate in this as well, so it's always a fun time to see the teachers do a little drumming and dancing as well. And the 3rd Annual Literacy and Arts Festival is May 24th. It's a celebration of students' work and this year's spotlight is on the Gauthstown 250th anniversary, so I believe a lot of their work is around the anniversary, so certainly feel free to go that. I believe it's probably 6:30 or 7 o'clock on the 24th.
And then my good news was just the Yakava ensemble at Maple. It was really well received today. It's the first day of it, but it was great to see the smiles, real energetic guy, Theo. I sat in on one of the workshops and I needed a drum.
Yeah.
It was good.
Wait till you see the man.
Yeah. I'm excited.
Got a bongo in the cellar you could borrow.
I could use a bongo.
Any other good news? Any sporting events that we haven't heard about?
Great stuff.
I think they're all doing very well.
They are doing very well.
There was an article last week or the week before in, I believe in the Union Leader that was commenting on, I think it was Gauthstown Hooks at Bow and Bedford's use of school dollars and how those towns were below the state average in use of per pupil dollars and how well all of their students did in Gauthstown.
This was in the Union Leader?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, it was an article. I think it got a couple quotes in there.
Yeah, you did. Nice article to see.
Should make sure that we hold on to the topic then. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move along. Two reports from standing committees on admin and finance.
Okay, I would like to move the manifest in the amount of $1,210,311.73.
May I have a second?
One second.
Okay, the major items are payroll was $441,271.21. And benefits were $9,280.3. Total was $589,501.20.
What are the taxes from?
Pardon?
What are the?
Taxes, payroll taxes.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Special ed, Crotchin Mountain was $34,312. Safeway for special ed transportation was $5,400. And provider, again, special ed transportation, $43,228. For a total of $82,940. General expenses was the Northwest Association Evaluation Association, $25,237. The SAU assessment, $56,453. School outfitters, that was for science tables, $8,005. The Apple Computer for the medium center replacement equipment, $37,578. Gauthstown Truck Center for athletic and tech education transportation, $6,358. And the Gauthstown Truck Center, again, for regular ed transportation, $95,040. For a total of $228,672.
Questions, concerns, observations?
And later, Mr. Laurel has some information on the driving contract.
Can we finish up with this piece?
That's it.
All in favor, if there are no questions, all in favor of approving the manifest as Opposed? Extentions?
At your last meeting, the board had authorized a one-year contract with Mr. Ross's driving school and had posed a question to Mr. Ross with respect to academic awards that he planned to introduce for the next school year. He does plan to introduce two $500 scholarships to be made to one boy and one girl here at the high school upon and the recipients will be as recommended by the school principal. So we have prepared contracts and we'll be continuing the processing of those contracts with Mr. Ross over the next week. Are there any additional questions that you would like to get some answers to before we go any further?
Resources?
Next meeting will be circled Monday in June, I believe is the 13th. It's 6 o'clock. I missed the last meeting, but I see that there's a first read of something down below.
And then we moved, or we moved everything else on the plate onto the 13th.
I didn't have my notes since I was the.
But the good news is there wasn't much. Plan, communications?
We meet again first Monday in June, which is the 6th. We did change up this article that we submitted to the news. You would have seen it in last Thursday's paper. Did any of you get a chance to look at it? I'm just interested to see that. If anybody has any feedback when we're here, that we intend to continue on with that style at least for another, another set. So, does anybody have any feedback for us?
I thought it was nicely presented. I liked it. It had a nice flavor to it. Provided good information.
Phew, I thought you were talking about wine there for a minute.
Had a wonderful bouquet. A little fruity, but no, too too tart.
It's the author.
With the board's permission, as a follow-up to our retreat, we came up with some mission statements. What I'd like to do is give those to PNC and have PNC invite everybody who would like to participate into, make sure we've got those refined because they sort of, they came off the board as is and that we're comfortable with them. And I would ask that, before that schedule, that everybody take a look, at least with broad strokes, through the book on culture that everybody received. It makes for a fascinating read. There's some really great points in there. There's some terrific information that may be useful in coming up with something that is the final product, if it's worth doing. So, is your next thing to do that?
No.
Okay.
No.
If that's all right with everybody. And then we'll get that brushed up and then bring it back, bring it back, at least as a citadel piece for approval at our next meeting.
And I did send everybody kind of a summary of that, a summary of that retreat as well
Kirk, government education?
We had a meeting last week and it was a very informative meeting. All of the principals and curriculum directors came and did it in a different format this year where we started from Glen Lake and worked our subject all the way through to see the continuity through all of the grades into the high school program. And really pointed out a lot of work that our staff is doing in coordinating and teaching each other and doing mentoring to get everybody on board with our new programs. And a lot of really good work behind the scenes has been done and with a lot of good outcomes. One example that Leslie Doster showed us, the reading that was on grade level book from last year to the reading level book from this year. And it was an incredible difference between what the kids were doing on grade level in kindergarten and what they were doing this year. And that kind of carried through the whole, the whole program as everyone gave their two cents. They're doing an excellent job. One thing I took out of that is definitely our professional development dollars are well-used and that we get our monies worth back hundredfold with the money that we put in to get our teachers on board with our new curriculums and with our Dini and Sinny and all of those programs so that everybody's working together. I would be the first to say, never cut that budget again. It is well worth the money that we put into it. Pretty much if you'd like to, or Keith would like to add more?
I mean, I think you're right. One of the most, one of the most important pieces was getting a good understanding from all of our buildings about, A, how the professional development dollars are being used and how they translate. I think we've always understood that it's an important investment and this board has always said, to the extent that you need to, you need space in order to find time and move bodies around to get them the professional development, we're going to continue to support that. And you know, if it means paying somebody to cover, a substitute to cover classes so that you can get a cadre of faculty together in any of the schools to work on professional development, that's something that we can support in addition to the professional development itself.
Keith? I would say part of the biggest thing that came out was how much they value those professional development dollars and time. You know, I think they made it very clear how important it is to them.
Elementary facilities, CNE meets again on June 13th, 7 o'clock at the SAU.
We are meeting on Thursday. We have whittled the list of architects down to three. We are bringing them in on Thursday for final interviews before we make a decision. So you will likely at your first June meeting have a recommendation from the committee to choose an architect for that project, to move that project forward. So they're coming back. We've offered them an opportunity to go through the two buildings, Maple and Bartlett, one more time tomorrow. So Jerry and Ray are going to walk them through the buildings one more time and then we'll meet and interview them on Thursday. So that's where we're at. Superintendent, can I move for a day?
Please. Unless there are any questions about the facilities review. Seeing none.
Interesting things show up at our schools, Glen Lake, this weekend. Apparently somebody felt we needed a new recliner chair, so we, on the sidewalk was a lovely recliner chair. Leslie showed up yesterday, this morning, so we take apparently everything. Students donated furniture, so just, yeah, so we did have to remove that today. So it, you know, again, I don't know who, we're going to look on the video cameras to see if we can see who dropped it off, but apparently somebody just felt like they didn't need it in their house anymore, that Glen Lake was a good place to drop it off.
Teachers remember.
Yeah.
It was a trade for the flag.
We are having a problem at Bartlett with the fire alarm panel. It's no concern, but we are looking at fixing it. It's about $1,800, it's something with a power supply to it. So we have Barron's Alarm coming and looking at that. It is beyond warranty. I did, we did check that out. I met with Crispin's House on Friday, with Al Beans, looking at their concern with funding for next year. They do, at this point, believe they have enough money to get them through this year. Have done a lot of fundraising for next year, but are still pretty significantly short. So we're looking at some potential brand opportunities or to see how else we can help them out. So we're just, I'm just exploring some things with them. Also met with Rick from Parks and Rec. He had seen or, and had read our minutes where we were talking about the middle school track and then the fee situation and was concerned, so he wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and had an open conversation. We've had a really good relationship working with Rick and so we had a nice conversation. Certainly the field at Mountain View has been improved and they've done what they needed to do. They just, it took them a little bit of time. I think if you saw my superintendent's notes, SUSE Science also donated a scoreboard for that same field, so that's been put out. The conversation around the fees and I expressed kind of where the board started with that conversation and he wanted the board to just be aware that those fees that are collected are not actually going back into the program at this point, they're going into a fund for capital projects. So it kind of helped me understand that, okay, so they're not getting a direct feedback from those fees at this point to improve their fields and not our fields that they're using. So he did want to share that information that at this point the money is going into a fund to pay more for capital projects, so he doesn't have access to that money either to do anything with, so.
He must be using our fields more often too now that the cemetery is going into cemetery fields.
Yeah, and I mean, we're losing cemetery fields as well and so that's, you know, trying to figure out where to do with those, because I think this is our last year that we're going to be able to use it. So, and the only other thing is.
I'm sorry to question the capital projects fund, do you know what?
I don't. I don't. I think they talked about maybe potentially at some point building fields on the land that they bought, but I don't know specifically. I don't know that Rick knew specifically where those were going to. And I am, Carol Kilmister and I are actually attending a conference tomorrow on collective bargaining. It's beyond the basics, so it looks like a great conference on looking at seniority systems, vacation and sick leave accruals, discipline and grievances, workdays and shifts, cash out plans, school issues such as length of day, class size and merit pay. So hopefully it'll be engaging and provide us with some other thoughts or ideas as we, as Gauthstown negotiates two contracts this year. So we look forward to that and I'll, can report out what I find, any information to the board. That's all I have.
Old Business, CIP.
CIP, we circulated updated matrices for you to review. The change that was made from the issue that was submitted during the last meeting was really a bundling of the Bartlett and Maple Avenue renovation projects along with the track and field facility here at the high school, theater renovation work and the construction of a new storage facility. The total bond value, if you will, for all of those projects is going to be approximately $16.2 million. They're all aligned in the 2012, 2013 fiscal year or school year. There are no other changes to any of the other projects that were presented and discussed with you at the last meeting.
Ray, what's the aggregate debt service based on, did you still use a 5% number?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and the aggregate?
We tried to break it out by location for Maple Avenue and Bartlett. First year's debt service would be approximately $824,000. And for the high school work.
That $185,000.
We have, yes, that would be $185,000.
Is the, is it, just out of curiosity, and help me out here, because I'm looking at the numbers just using the Maple and Bartlett project, as you go forward, the cost diminishes in the four years that are on the schedule.
Right.
Is that generally true for the life of the bond?
Yes.
Okay. So our most expensive year would be the first year.
Year one, right. Decreasing interest payments as you go through the life of the bond.
If hypothetically, and I don't know that you did this, but it might have valued us later on, if you were able to do this at the rate that we just refinanced at, that would have a substantial impact?
Two points, yes. It would have. This is a very conservative estimate.
I understand.
And as we get closer and have better estimates, we'll have better bond information and we'll be able to give you more specifics.
Right now it's a little over 1.1 million in the first year. Questions, concerns, observations? You need a motion?
Yes.
To approve this?
To approve it and then that, then this will go to CIP as it exists?
Right. You'll be preparing project sheets with detailed explanations of everything that's on this matrix and be presenting those to the CIP committee on June 16th.
Probably the most important other piece of this before we vote on it is that this will require a great deal of effort, not only on the part of the administration, but the board as well, to educate the public about where the need exists, why we're doing it and the cost, as well as the benefit, and probably most importantly, after you get past those three pieces, the benefits to the educational environment for our students. And so I would anticipate that part of our charge to PNC, because everything's flowing downhill to you today?
It seems to be.
Will be to orchestrate what that looks like, to figure out how the information will be staged, where the opportunities are to talk about it and to create opportunities. But it really will, it really will require an investment from every member of the board, not necessarily every day, but when we're called upon, we're going to have to carve up that pie and figure out how to get it out and communicate with people and answer their questions going forward. Having said all that and volunteered you all for a lot of work, Hank?
Did Ray say that the theater improvement was also in the bond?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I'm looking on here.
It should be, it's $450,000, I believe. And that's for reconstruction of the interior of the theater, new seating and new sound, new lighting and then an addition to, for storage.
The only reason I asked this, Stacy, was the memo doesn't include the bonding, that it's in bond.
Oh, it. Yeah, so it's a little, it's on line 272.
Okay, I see you jumped it, okay, I see.
270 describes what the cost would be for the work to be done. 272 describes the debt service.
Questions, concerns, observations? I need a motion. Jenny? To, just so that we understand what the motion is, the motion would be to approve the CIP matrix as presented?
Absolutely.
And I need a second?
One second.
Second by Diane, okay. Questions, concerns, observations? Questions, concerns, observations?
Just the same concern that Sue and I had at the workshop on the bundling of the projects.
Again, it's, it's a big fight, the choices and the balancing act that the board has to do and your decision is how you accomplish the projects and how you deal with the cost of those projects. If we stage them in all likelihood, we're going to find ourselves in a position where we, we are unlikely to get as good financing as we go forward and as we go through recovery. And we have a more finite debt obligation to deal with instead of cutting them off piece by piece. And my guess is, is that we'll also see more favorable bonding terms on a somewhat larger project.
I would also add that two of those projects, Barnard Park and the theater renovation, have been on CIP for a long time and have just continued to move out. The track situation is horrendous. I mean, it's an unsafe track, so we have to, we have to move on some of these things. We just can't keep putting them off.
We can no longer hold meets on that track and you know, it's reached the point now where you, for a long time it was in there as a, as a quarter million dollar project. It started its life as something that we hoped and thought we might be able to fix and, and sort of carry us through. Rather than fix and carry us through, we've allowed it to carry, carry us through and doing anything of this structure is simply going to be prohibitive in terms of cost to try to reclaim it. And we'll get more life and more value out of new construction. All in favor? Oppose? Extentions? Hank, do you want to speak to your extension?
Yeah, well, I'm still against the bundling, but I don't want to shoot the whole thing down by having a no vote, so just up staying. Because on the record, there will be no, no vote against it.
Thank you. We're still going to put you to work, okay? So we're 601. Next item of business, new business is, next year's school for meeting dates.
So in front of you are the proposed dates, the first and third Mondays. You'll notice in September, it's a little, we have one date in August I put in because the first Monday in September is a holiday, so, which means you're not meeting until the 12th. Given Goshen's so big and you don't typically meet in the summer, I thought maybe having that last Monday in August would be a good time to meet, because I think the 12th, you just have lots of business by then typically. So we put that date in. The other date in January, the, the third Monday's a holiday, so we put it on the fourth Monday, which is exactly what we did this year and it seemed to work out because deliberative sessions right around that time as well. And then you'll have to determine, and you don't have to do this tonight, but when you would like to do deliberative session, if you want to do it on a Saturday again, or you prefer to do it back on a weekday, so, but you have some time to think about that. But that's still just an open question. But all the others are the first and third Mondays and they don't conflict with anything at this point.
Another item that needs to get on the schedule is the budget committee would like to firm up a date for a presentation. Apparently there's also some, the town is trying to carve out some different dates from what they were shooting at. So if we can dialogue with them, they also need, and do we have, somebody didn't do it already. Do we have a form for requesting the smart room for their use?
They can get it right off of the website.
Can get it off the website?
Under policies.
I forwarded it to Dan that night.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, that's there. And we can't firm up a date yet because we haven't even started scheduling budget in for next year. So as soon as we schedule it in, we can definitely give them a date, but it'll be usually the, in August we meet as an administrative team and schedule all three school districts' budget stuff in, so.
Okay. Actually, my mistake. Fraud prevention and fiscal management policy, DIH.
That's a first read of a policy. It's a, I believe a new policy, one we don't have currently, but recommended by the School Boards Association.
It is not responding to a problem with either fraud or a problem with prevention of fraud-
No.
Or a problem with fiscal management. It is simply something that NHSBA has recommended.
Yep, so take a look at it. Do you have any questions?
HR, we certainly reviewed it. We made some changes to it. We looked at the recommendations both from Stacy and from Ray on it. We fine tuned the wording for the first read, so that's what we spent our time in HR doing this week, this past week.
The Barnard Park lease?
I'm just looking for a motion from the board for authority to enter into a four-year extension of the Barnard Park track, which while if the, if the bond passes and we get the new track, that will give us the time to build it, but we'll still need to use it up until that point in time. So I'm just looking for a motion to approve the extension of our current lease by four years.
And, and once, once this board approves it, it will then go to the select for their-
I actually think it may be on there again tonight, so.
I have a question regarding that. The contract specifically spills out that we're required to provide maintenance on that track.
Correct.
My concern is we're not planning to invest future funds into that track. Are we being held to maintain it though, with the wording, how it exists? I haven't read it in a couple of years, so that's what I'm trying to refresh my memory on.
I mean, they have not held us to anything on it. I know they're very well aware that we're looking to, at this point, to move the track. I, I think all of Barnard Park needs some attention.
My concern is they may say from a liability standpoint, since the public is allowed to use it and we're not using it, please fix the following because it constitutes a serious trip hazard or something to that effect.
Well, we're still using, we're still using it as a track, so-
Oh, I know that.
As long as we're using it as a track, it's safe for the public.
Well, in your interpretation. I guess I'm just a little concerned on that wording that I recall being in there.
As part of the contract review, maintenance of the track was not raised as something that needed to be done.
And they have in the last few years, but I believe there is a clause in there though that makes it that they can force us to do it.
No, it says the school district shall be responsible for maintaining the track area. The town of Goshen shall be responsible for maintaining the playing fields. That's all it says.
Okay. I don't think it-
I don't have a problem with that wording. No, that's fine.
We have a motion to approve an extension of the four-year, of the track lease for an additional four years, which also includes one other change, which is access to water.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Jenny? Questions, concerns?
What's the access to water saying?
Yeah.
Long story, but because the facilities were locked at a prior time, we couldn't, we had to have students lug water from the school over. Rick has been helpful and kind enough to allow us to get access to the facility. We can get the water there. We just wanted to memorialize that practice in the contract.
It wasn't put in the contract when Dave French was working there because there may have been some abuse by the students with the water over there. So they basically locked off the water from the poolhouse for any access. And Dave French did start letting us use it again, but it was never officially put in the contract several years ago.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All in favor? Oppose? Extentions? Reunanimous?
Okay, I have a request, and this is kind of exciting. We have a Sarah Tower, who is a science teacher here at the high school, has, if you remember, we talked about a science exposition that was held and we had tons of students who won tons of awards here at the high school. Well, there was a special category for students who did research on water. And as part of, one of our projects was on water, those students were entered into, just by virtue of doing this, entered into a national competition. And we were chosen and won for the state of New Hampshire for that water project, which was acid rain titration in an aquatic environment. The three students who won were Stephen Edmonds, Jay Lizotte and Katie Veneman. Probably killing their last names. Anyway, as part of this prize, the teacher and one of the students were able, are getting a fully paid trip to Chicago to represent New Hampshire in this national water competition. If they win that competition, they get a full, the entire team gets a full paid trip to Stockholm, Sweden to compete at the national level. Which is absolutely wonderful. So it's actually a wonderful thing. So I'm looking for permission for the teacher and the student. The student will, is, oh, I can't, let's see if I can pick out who it was that they decided to go. They duped it out to choose which one was going.
Who is paying for the trip?
It is, it's fully funded by the organization that's, the water project that's hosting it. It's the Stockholm Junior Water Competition.
So even a trip to Chicago?
So it's no cost to us. It's airfare, hotel, all their meals. The student will stay with another male student in, in room and then the teacher will get a, a single room herself. Jay Lizotte is the student who is going and Sarah Tower. So I'm looking for the board because it is, interestingly, he actually is a senior this year and will have graduated already, so he's actually not a student any longer. But because he's a student now and because they're, they're going as part of the school, I wanted to bring it forward to the board to see if anybody had any objections. Again, if nobody makes a motion or changes anything, it will get approved. They're going, it's June 23rd to the 26th. So it's a great opportunity for us to get some national exposure. I think it was a great project that our kids did. They're very proud. They're very excited to go. And just to, to get a, an award to represent New Hampshire in Chicago is huge.
What does he have to do, read a paper or something?
I think they just have to do, they're, the same thing they did here, which is present their project.
I say they go and good luck to them. That's awesome.
Definitely. Good luck.
Any objections? Unless we know something?
As long as I can be the shepherd for Stockholm, Sweden.
Yeah, and that's a fully paid trip for all three of the students.
We're going to dupe that one out.
The other trip is just a, this is again a repeat out of state field trip, so if there's no motions, it will happen. We're looking at Team 8-1, approximately 98 students going to the Museum of Science in Boston. Again, this is a repeat, but it's out of state, so we bring it back.
What's the date of that trip?
That trip is June 3rd.
June what?
June 3rd.
3rd.
So there's no motion?
All set. Tell them have a good trip. Next up is the board retreat report that Phil has asked since he is unable to join us if we can put that off until our next meeting two weeks from now.
And I did send everybody a summary if anybody wants a printout. I did, I do have them, so.
We can't print it out. Was that a different format Stacy did?
It was, it should be Word.
Actually, I may have, because I had trouble opening mine.
She can print out your weekly reports, but she can't print out, thank you.
I made extras.
Thank you. Now, there was just on my, it was just a date that you went through. The bottom was illegible. It was duplicated on top of itself.
Oh, that's weird. Oh, you know what? I did it on my Mac and then sent it from my PC, but that probably has something to do with it, maybe?
Could be.
Okay, so we'll move that topic to PNC and bring that back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Seeing none, we move on to patching.
I have just notification for two staff members that are changing track. Jenna Burns from Mountain View is moving from her bachelor's to her bachelor's plus 15. And Catherine Ford at the high school is moving from her master's plus 15 to her master's plus 3. So I typically will send them a note on behalf of the board and myself congratulating them and for their hard work done, continuing to take classes, which I think, you know, teachers go to workshops, but to dedicate the time to take a class to improve themselves is, is huge. So I do try to acknowledge those when they come in.
And next up is non-public. So I need a vote, a motion to go into non-public. By Hank, seconded by Jenny. And we have a persuant to the department?
Yep, persuant to.
Persuant to RS91A3II, Section C?
Yep.
Thank you. I need a head none to confirm?
Yes, sorry.
All right. We will go into non-public.